It is now five o'clock, July 17, 2018. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, its successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez? Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Gomez being absent.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 54954.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section, for all three. And I do have a couple of cards, and I believe these people would like to speak at this time, so I will call on Sandra Gabriel.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Sandra Gabriel. I'm a resident of Victorville. I'm a parent of two kids, and a representative of other parents that couldn't come today. We, as parents, think that it is important to promote reading in children at a very young age. It is essential in child's development. Reading helps them have a better language, use their imagination, acquire knowledge, and it is just very beneficial in general. These reasons are why it is important that children and young people go to the library, whether to look for information related to a specific homework assignment, or simply to look for a book they can read freely. Because of those benefits, we are grateful that we have a library in Victorville. However, we ask that the benches located outside the Victorville Library be removed. They serve little or no purpose for the people who truly use the services provided by the library. Often, there are homeless people sitting on those benches, smoking. On various occasions, they can even be found smoking marijuana. We believe that it is important to enforce the health and safety code of not smoking in public places, so that we can enjoy a healthy environment. Due to a reason stated above, many of the Victorville parents prefer to go to the libraries located in his area or Apple Valley. Parents don't feel safe going to the Victorville Library. Furthermore, some of the parents have children who have respiratory problems, like asthma, and the cigarette smoke worsens their health issues. Our kids are the future. It is important to promote their reading from a young age, at a place where parents and kids can feel safe and secure, a place that is free from elements that are detrimental to our health and well-being. Assuming that our request will be taken in consideration, so that we, the parents and children of Victorville, can all enjoy the services that are offered at the library, we take in advice of all the City Council members.
Next, I have Levana Wilson.
Thank you, honorable council members, for the opportunity to share my heart regarding the Victorville...
Closer to the microphone, please.
The Green Tree Golf Course. We live close to the Green Tree Golf Course. In fact, myself, my husband, he would have liked to have been here, but he worked a long hot day in the sun working for Arizona Pipeline, so he's at home recuperating to do it again tomorrow. My parents are here. They live next door to us. My daughter's here, four-year-old. There's little ones in that whole area, as well as adults. And it's a green belt of our city. I remember when my grandma moved here, not just my grandma, my aunts, I got cousins, there's a whole family, they all moved to dwell around the golf course area. And we love the golf course. We've watched different things happen in the neighborhoods surrounding, but yet, as a community, there's still so many good people, law-abiding citizens, taxpayers, voting citizens, who are there, looking out for each other, and wanting to see the neighborhood thrive, our community thrive, not wanting to see it go downhill and take more than just our neighborhood, but the community and the city with it. So, let me get back to this. I'm not good at this at all, but thank you. I appreciate your patience. I'm glad that you're looking into some creative alternatives for the closure of the golf course. I know the aesthetics. I mentioned the green belt of the city, the aesthetics. Even when you drive down from Vegas and you're stopped in traffic, and you're looking and you see the beauty of the green right there when you're in traffic, or when you go down Green Tree Boulevard and you see the green on both sides, it's beautiful. I was even seeing with dog walks, bird counters that are out there saying, "Have you seen this kind of bird or that kind of bird that's got a lot of environmental things?" And I know that costs a lot of money to have the place watered, but all of that water goes back into the aquifer. It goes back into the water table, so that we can have water here to drink for future generations. And the resources. I know that there were some questions asked about the resources, and maybe the resources that were being paid in came to here, and the resources paid out came up to here, and sometimes it was more like this, and there was more of a gap in between. But when I looked at the agenda to see what else was here on the agenda, I saw a lot of things about maintenance and landscaping for other areas, maybe the meridians, or whatever the areas are. Those aren't bringing in any resources at all. And the golf course at least brings in some resources, and that is beneficial to our community. It's an area that's not just a payout, but something that's coming back in to feed the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the cards that I have. So now, may I have a declaration of closed session items by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have several items this evening, however, many of them are related. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3, the facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. Item B is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. That is related to Item K on behalf of the Airport Authority. The case number and case names are fully set forth on the agenda. Item C is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The parties to the negotiations and the property location is set forth on the agenda. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and again, pursuant to 54956.9E2. The information and facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Item E, on behalf of the City Council, is related to Item M on behalf of the Airport Authority, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case name and case number is set forth on the agenda. Item F is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and again, pursuant to 54956.9E2. The facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Item G, on behalf of the City Council, is related to Item N on behalf of the Airport Authority, again, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, and the case name and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Items H and I are both real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property locations and property negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, Item J, on behalf of the City Council, is related to Item L on behalf of the Airport Authority, and again, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. And again, the case name and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session, or at the commencement at the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we will recess to our closed session, a regular session convened It is now 6:04, July 17, 2018. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, its successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
May we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had several items for closed session this evening. I will run through them as quickly as possible. Item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and the facts and circumstances pertaining to that are set forth on the agenda. Item B, on behalf of the City Council, was related to Item K on behalf of the Airport Authority. That is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, and the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item C is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property location and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to that are also set forth on the agenda. Item E, on behalf of the City Council, was related to Item M on behalf of the Airport Authority, existing litigation pursuant to 54956.9D1 of the Government Code, and again, the parties to the litigation and the case name is set forth on the agenda. Item F is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and the information related to that is set forth on the agenda. Item G was related to Item N on behalf of the Airport Authority, and again, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case name and case numbers are on the agenda. Item H was not required. Item I was real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The real property and the parties to the negotiations are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, Item J was related to Item L on behalf of the Airport Authority, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.91. The case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. There is a reportable action with respect to Item J, which is related to Item L. The council, on a four-one vote with Councilmember Gomez voting no, decided to file a writ, which is basically an appeal of the lower court's decision to deny the motion for summary judgment. There is also reportable action with respect to Item Number G, and that is the existing litigation. The council, on a five-o vote, authorized us to file a demurra with respect to motions for summary judgment in that action as well.
Thank you. We will have our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Father Patrick Travers of Holy Innocence Catholic Church, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger, so please stand.
May I just bow our heads and pray? Tonight, we thank you, Lord, for the freedom to meet and participate in city government. Please grant this council the discernment needed to promote peace, order, and justice within themselves, so that the welfare and needs of our city can be met. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement, giving each of them a personal peace in their lives and joy in the tasks set before them. We pray for the agenda to be discussed, and the assurance that those who will benefit from the decisions made here are what would please you. We are so blessed, and we thank you, Lord, to put the joy and trust back into this body of civil servants. All this we ask of you, in the name of your most cherished Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. (Inaudible)
This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations, so at this time, I will have our City Clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, following our two revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. The first one is Item B1, the resolution number for the confirmation of annual assessments for MAD number two. Vista del Valle has been changed from 18-044 to 18-069. And revision to Item B6, supplemental information establishing speed zones. Those are all the revisions, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we also do not have any appeal hearings, therefore, we will be moving on to public hearings. And our first Item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against confirming annual assessments and approval of engineers' reports for landscape maintenance assessment districts, drainage facilities assessment districts, and maintenance assessment districts. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the annual confirmation of engineers' reports for landscape maintenance assessment districts numbers one through eight, drainage facilities assessment district number one through three, and maintenance assessment district numbers one and two, and adopt Resolution 18-032 through 18-043 and 18-069.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by council members?
For Item B1, yeah.
Go ahead.
So for Item B1, is the city considering a landscape maintenance district for the 680 homes that are abutting the golf courses? Would provide a special benefit to the aforementioned parcels that are about the golf courses? The next thing, I don't know if that's a yes, but I have another question. Is the Green Tree Golf Course going to be having such resolutions as an annual assessment for maintenance or park landscaped areas? And if you look at pages 200, 201, 206, and 209, you see LMADs 1, LMAD 6, and DFAD number 1. Are any of these citywides encompassing the Green Tree Golf Course?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, the question as to whether or not the city is contemplating, including the golf course, is a part of an LMAD, which is a landscape maintenance assessment district? The answer is no. In fact, that's something we had contemplated studying as a part of the budget process. Included in the proposed budget for the golf course was an amount to actually study the formation of a CFD or assessment district type mechanism. And in any case, it's going to require consent from the property owners. So, we're not actively doing that today. All of these items that are before you, LMADs, the maintenance assessment districts, which we call MADS, or the DFADs, which are the drainage facility districts, these are all districts that have been voted on and consented previously by the then-property owners to allow themselves to be taxed for these common improvements.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Keith, do I understand correctly that there are no increases in...
That is correct. This, similar to how we've done it in the past, there's a requirement procedurally that annually, we reaffirm the amounts, or reestablish the amounts, and once the action is taken tonight, we then turn this information over to the county assessor's office, so that they can then take this information and publish against the affected property owners.
Question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
There were a couple of instances where we received complaints in regard to the LMADs, and when staff looked into those, the amount of assessment that was set up years ago, really insufficient to provide a high level of service. And there's no increases contemplated, but it would seem that after this is done, if staff is going to contemplate either any additional or changes in the existing ones, there's a procedure to be followed, and the LMADs are going to, those with a very low assessment are going to suffer. Or the property owners in that area are going to have to vote to have an increase, because labor costs keep going up, and the water cost, and the utility cost, and everything else. And yet, the amount is frozen for what they pay, and so the cost now exceed the revenue. Is there any intention of staff, even though we need to do this for the budget year, it needs to get to the county, it needs to get to the assessor's office and the tax collector's office? I hope that staff will look at these areas that may need changes, or new assessments, or increase in current assessments, and don't stop after this hearing, whether these are approved or denied. It seems like to me there's a lot more work to be done. And I know that the property owners that I have talked to, in the areas where the maintenance is lacking, clearly don't have any understanding of how it works. And there was an assumption by the property owners that I talked to, that all the LMAD property owners paid the same. And I don't think there's any that, well, very few that paid the same. Some pay an amount that's very adequate, some pay an insufficient amount. That needs to be addressed, so that the people who are paying the bill have an understanding, and then can make a decision to leave it the way it is, live with the maintenance they have, or increase the maintenance after they determine what level of service they're willing to pay for and the service they want. That would apply, hopefully, that would apply to not only existing, but any new that's contemplated. I believe that all of these were proposed, if memory serves me right, all of these were proposed by the developer. And so, when the property owners bought the property, there's a condition of sale, and they all knew that this would be there. I don't know of any that have been informed. There have been some annexations into these, but I don't know of any new ones that have been formed by the property owners after the fact. But again, I'd like to see staff present that, so that everyone will have a better understanding of where these are located, and exactly how they apply, and why.
At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards from anyone that wants to speak. Therefore, I close the public hearing. I'm speaking of Item B1. No, we're not there yet. Well, maybe they need to raise them up a little bit. Thank you, we will correct it. Yeah, they raised it. Thank you. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
About the golf course, right?
No, we're not there yet.
The golf course is not on the agenda tonight.
No. That's not a part of what we're speaking on.
Our flyer?
Don't have a flyer.
Don't have a flyer.
Your golf course is going to be gone if...
We, the City of Victorville, do not have a flyer anyplace. If private citizens are doing something, staff will be happy to meet with you, but the city does not have any flyers anywhere.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if there's interest in the golf course for this agenda item, or for this agenda tonight, there's no agenda item specific to the golf course, so public comment would be the more appropriate place to have those conversations.
Exactly. So if anybody wants to, that's not from us, ma'am.
Not removed?
No.
Just so clear, we're on Item B1, which is to approve the annual assessments for the LMADs.
Yes.
Landscape maintenance assessment districts. That's all we're dealing with.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I will continue. Okay, I did close the public hearing.
Public comment.
And I do not have any cards from anyone at this time.
Comment for City Clerk. Do you have at least one?
Well, yes, that will come later.
Not for agenda, I have, no, it's public comment.
Public comment has not been held yet. Public comment is later on in the agenda. We will get to public comment, and everybody will have an opportunity to speak on public comment.
Right now, we're just speaking on Item B1, okay? And I did close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to err on the side of caution, I know there's a lot of these, but if anybody, any of the council members has property in any one of the specific LMADs, like Eagle Ranch, Brentwood, Old Town, Vista Verde, West Creek, Talon Ranch, any of those ones, I would have them, and Las Haciendas, and Vista del Valle, and I would have them not vote on that particular one, if that's possible. I know, I think Councilmember Negretti might have some interests in property on West Creek. So, if anybody else can have a quick look to see if they have anything.
I don't think I fall into that category, do I?
Okay, no, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Then, perhaps, Mr. Negretti could make the motion on everything but for Resolution Number, you said you were in West Creek, which would be everything but Resolution 18039 and Resolution 18042. So, all of the other resolutions.
Okay, so I'll go back. I did close the public hearing. And once I close the public hearing, just for the record, we will not...
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve the recommendation as read by the City Clerk. And I'll bow to the one that Eric owns property in.
Minus West Creek.
Which is 18039 and 18042.
Okay. Okay. Second?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Is there any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself.
Then we need a...
Approval of the other two items? One or two?
Two, that'd be Resolution 18039 and 18042.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Now, we are on item B2. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against confirming the annual assessments for unpaid rubbish collection fees, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and/or Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 18-031, confirming the annual assessments for unpaid rubbish collection fees, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and/or Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? I'll start with my right. Anyone here? No?
Questions at this time? Thank you.
Yeah, so I have a question. When will the notices of delinquency go out for the residents? And is there any further contact, or any other notice after the initial contact? And will this cause any shutdowns for our residents?
Madam Mayor, City Council, I can answer those questions. So, the notices have already gone out to the residents. They will have until, I believe, June 30th? I'm sorry, they will have 60 days, let's see, let me just make sure. July 17th is tonight. I believe they'll have to the end of the month in July, before we actually send the liens over to the county to actually pay us directly for the delinquencies and be removed from the list.
So, that's the only contact they're going to have then, right?
Well, they've already received a written contact, so they received a notice by mail.
And their services are going to be shut off if they don't pay, and that's going to get them back in?
No, 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 no. So, this is, will not be, it will not lead to shut off services. This is to collect on, pretty much if they made it to this list, there's a chance that services have been questioned. A lot of these properties are vacant, and that's how they end up on the list.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do have one card.
Thank you. I'm one of the people that's affected. I have been without water and garbage pickup since, I believe, March 13th, so over four months. I had a renter in here, in my house, who left me with $2,000 worth of bills, and then the post office lost my disability check. And you are not allowed to make a partial payment. You can only pay the amount, which at the time was only $69. It is now almost $500. I'm getting charged more every month than when I had gas, even though I'm not getting trash pickup, recyclables, or water. I personally think this is illegal. Both the gas and the electric company give people who do not have a lot of money, which I've been disabled 28 years, they make, they have the care program that you can sign up for. They have equal payment plan, so that you're not hit with a large bill. And the water company does none of that, that I'm aware of. I've checked with them before, so unless something has changed, they don't. Thankfully, I have friends, many of whom came to support me tonight, who have been supplying me with water. But as someone who's disabled, trying to take a bath and wash your hair over a kitchen sink, especially in March when the house was very cold, adds to my already difficult life. And I personally think the water company should be ashamed of themselves for the way they handle things. Do I, I've never been to a council, is, I think I kept it under three minutes, I had more to say, but I wanted to hear through the rules.
I believe you also want to speak on item B3.
Um, it's the same one. It's, it's, one is, there are two different resolutions, and one is the trash, and one is...
Call your name when we get to item B3. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, may we remove, refer this item to staff to investigate?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I might, I think the best approach for these individual cases, because the item that we're dealing with is in the totality of assessments for non-payment. If there's individual cases and circumstances, I think it'd be best if staff meet separately with the resident, and I would turn them over to George Harris.
So, you will be contacting her then? Or...
Yes, if you could leave your contact information with my staff, John, could you raise your hand, please? John, Mindyella, we'll get back, we'll get with you shortly, sometime tomorrow.
Now, is this your telephone number here?
Um, no, I did not put my phone number on there, but I would certainly be happy to give it to you.
You can give it to the city clerk, and that way, we will pass it on. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much for listening.
That was the only card that I had. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And once I close the public hearing, I will prohibit any further oral or written comments. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
I think we're ready to take a motion.
We did, yeah, you're right. So, what I need now is a motion.
Move approval of the item. Second?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I wasn't aware that we didn't, we had such a program where we didn't allow any kind of payments. So, thank you for coming up, because I think we should have payments of some sorts. I don't know if administration can verify that there are payments, or if they're not, what can we actually do to encompass people who are on fixed incomes, or just generally allow for something like this to occur?
We handle special needs on a case-by-case basis, and that's why I encourage that they get with our deputy city manager, George Harris, to decide what is the appropriate way to handle this particular case.
Thank you.
I'd like, I would also like if Mr. Harris would report back to council on the disposition of the ones that have a need. I was a little bit confused, just for clarification. Individual indicated that renters had left her, is this a rental unit or her home? And if there's no running water, we have another major problem with the health department, so I wish you'd get on this quickly. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We move on to item B3. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against confirming the annual assessments for unpaid water fees. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the board adopt Resolution Number VWD 18-007, confirming the annual assessments for unpaid water fees at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members of staff?
The same questions I posed for item B2, or the same questions that I will pose again. There's one contact, I'm assuming the same for the sewer, it would be for the water, the same questions apply, so it's the same answers as well. So then, the next question is, are we also doing a need-by-need case assessment to anybody that comes and has an issue not being able to pay a full amount?
Yes.
So, do we have that online anywhere, so people know? Because I don't know why they would have to come to City Hall and figure it out. Is there postings online? Do we have staff that work on that, or have something on an envelope, notices, anything to make the general public aware?
No. To my knowledge, it's not something that we encourage. We provide a service, and we have a general expectation that in exchange for the service, the amount get paid in full. So, we certainly don't advertise case-by-case opportunity for payment plans or anything of that sort. Otherwise, I think we'd be inundated with case-by-cases to deal with. So, circumstances do matter, and when they're brought to our attention, we can consider them. But in exchange for the delivery of water service, we have the expectation to get paid.
So, in that line, do we have a procedural process that we follow, is discretion up to the city administration to decide what case-by-case would qualify for something of this nature?
Yes.
Yes, there's a process or a listing of online items where you can kind of tag and say, yes, 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 no. It's not discretionary, in other words.
It is discretionary to administration.
I happen to know for a fact, I have some clients that I have assisted myself with the city regarding, especially rentals, where they don't pay their utilities, and the city has been more than accommodating. Even though they are rentals, they receive rental money, and yet, they have been allowed to make payments until they bring it up to date. So, I happen to know that the city does accommodate. Jim, go ahead.
I have a question. I know as a homeowner, if you don't pay the bill on the following bill, you show an arrears or a delinquent. So, month by month, every homeowner that has the service ought to know how much they owe, and how much is accumulating. If you have a renter that has signed up for a service, how does the homeowner know that it's being paid or not paid? I believe we discussed this a year ago. It's to be a notification to the homeowner after a point, a certain point of delinquency, so that the homeowner wouldn't suddenly get a notice that they owe $800 or $900 and not know anything about it.
Yeah, Mayor Protem Cox, you're correct. After the second delinquency notice goes out, a duplicate copy of that notice goes to the owner also. And then, from there, further on, all the correspondence goes to both the tenant and the owner of the property.
So, by the time we get to this hearing, which is a lien on the property, everyone should have been informed.
Everybody's informed with multiple notices, multiple letters from the city, on what is owed. And there is a contact information on the letter that goes out, so if they have any questions or concerns, they can contact staff.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one other thing. So, she mentioned $69 to $500, that's a three-month period. Are we doing compounded interest, or how are we building up those interests when we're charging this potential delinquency fee?
It is not compounded, it's just fixed interest, and it's really not calculated as interest, there's a penalty amount. But I, without having an opportunity to talk to the resident directly, and give a better understanding of their particular case, I really would be reluctant to kind of dive into the scenario at this time. So, I would be glad to give the council a full report that summarizes our discussions at a later time, so that we're all on the same page, and I'm fully aware of this particular situation.
And that's the 3% when you're talking about, the fixed rate? That's what I read in here, 3%?
It is fixed.
And then, plus, you said there's an added charge fee for being late?
That is the charge fee.
What's the charge fee late, for being late?
No, that is the charge fee.
Oh, the 3%?
Yes.
Thanks.
At this time, I open the public hearing. And Stephanie Nelson, did you still want to speak, or... You have to come to the podium.
Because of all the medication I take and the severe pain that I have, I have everything set up to automatically pay, and at one point, I was, had like $300 or $400 in the water district, overpaid. And that went on for quite some time, and I finally lowered my monthly payment when I realized what was happening. But I didn't get any interest from that, they didn't return the money, and, you know, now, I'm being, I'm being hit. And I've been a good customer. It's just, things have kind of gone around, and so I just want to say that, at one point, and you can check the records, because it was several years ago, I was like $300 or $400 extra that was in the account. I've given my information to your person, and I'll wait for a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I close the public hearing. Can we have a motion?
Move approval to, for the annual assessment of unpaid water fees.
Second? Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Ms. Gomez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to item B4. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending and revising the natural gas service rules, regulations, and rate schedules for customers of Victorville Municipal Utility Services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council conduct a public hearing for Resolution Number 18-059, and adopt Resolution Number 18-059 to revise the Victorville Municipal Utility Service VMS, natural gas service rules, regulations, and rate schedules.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council members of staff?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to point out for clarity of folks in the audience, this item relates to the customers of the Victorville Municipal Utility Service. Those are commercial customers at Foxborough, and at the base, and a few other locations. They are not the citizens sitting in this room. We are not doing anything to your gas rates or anything else. These are undered rates for our customers of the service.
Thank you. Any other questions by staff?
Yes. So, we're looking at the rules and regulations and changes being taken effect August 1st, 2018. I was under the assumption that we have a process that we follow after a resolution has been brought in. There's a 30-day period where we actually let that allowed to go in, in full force. But I don't see that being implemented tonight, and I don't think this is an emergency. And if it were an emergency, I would see why we wouldn't implement this August 1st, and we're on July 17th. So, that's not 30 days out, so perhaps it's just the process that differs on this particular item. So, I want to have clarification what that process is, maybe it just differs for these types of items.
These types of rates, along with the next item, can be adopted by resolution. You've already established that process by ordinance, what you're talking about is, some rates require the ordinance process, which requires a first reading, and then a second reading, and then a 30-day period for the effective date. However, under the VMS rules and regulations, we can adjust these fees by resolution. And again, we do have to have the public hearing, which is what we're having tonight.
And then, these rates are clearly affecting only our commercial and industrial users, is that correct?
That's correct.
And do these individuals have access to Prop 218 privileges, or not? Just trying to compare what we've done in the past to commercial, industrial, and then residential users.
The rates are required to comply with 218.
So, they would have also had something sent, they could protest if that were the case, I'm assuming?
Notices had gone out with their bills.
And are these yearly schedules something that's routine every single year, or is this something that is coming new? I mean, we've had in the past something that, we've subsidized certain items, and then we're, we want to hype it up and put more, you know, raising the rates on, for instance, water and other things that we had not too long ago, solid waste. But this one, I'm trying to compare it with what we've done in the past.
Yeah, so, in the staff report, it actually identifies for you the last time we've done this, and it was in, it appears to be 2017, so last year, August 2017, so this time last year. And in fact, for the last several years that I'm... And in fact, for the last several years that I'm recalling, it's been something we've done right around budget time, whether it's August, July, or June. We try to do it a little bit earlier, if possible, to get it approved consistent with the start of our fiscal year, but this one lagged for some reason. But so that you're aware, similar to other utilities, as is the case in our natural gas system out at SCLA, which serves about sixty-some-odd customers, we do a system analysis, which is an analysis that determines what the system needs are in terms of O and M and capital repair. And then with that, similar to other utilities, we draw a revenue requirement to help satisfy and offset the cost to operate, maintain, and exercise capital expenditures. In summary, this item proposes a rate increase to those customers, a rate increase in the order of 2.95 percent. This 2.95 percent largely is attributed to the expected rate increase that's passed through to the Victorville Utility from Southwest Gas. The system out at the airport operates through two interconnects, if you will, or two mainline connections to Southwest Gas System. So it's basically using Southwest Gas Distribution to deliver gas.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, at this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards, so I close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt resolution eighteen dash zero five nine to revise the Victorville Municipal Utility Services Natural Gas Service Rules, Regulations, and the Rate Schedule. That's attachment one and appendix A. Thank you.
Second. Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B5. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending, revising the electric rules, regulations, and rate schedules, tariffs for electric services provided to customers of Victorville Municipal Utility Services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct a public hearing for resolution number eighteen dash zero four four and adopt resolution number eighteen dash zero four four to revise the Victorville Municipal Utility Services Electric Service Rules, Regulations, and Rate Schedules.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council members of staff?
What is the significance of inserting the word tariffs in item?
I know tariff is standard used in the industry. In fact, Edison's rate structures refer to their, refer to their rates on a schedule of tariffs. I think it's just an industry standard.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you know the number of customers that are affected by this?
Just over sixty. There's about sixty customers at SCLA.
Again, the same thing applies, this doesn't comply to the audience or the general public, it's just special uses at the basis.
That's correct. In this particular case, there are two providers of electricity in the city of Victorville, and one is SoCal Edison, which all the residents are familiar with. But in the Foxborough Industrial Park, which has industrial customers only, along with Southern California Logistics Airport, which is industrial slash commercial customers only, those are the two providers. In our case, we provide service where we buy the commodity and distribute it directly to those users. This particular item is proposing a slight increase to those customers based upon the system needs, and the rate increase is proposed at three percent. As a benchmark, though, we do compare our rates regularly to Edison's schedule of rates, and we're still tracking. And after this rate increase, we're expecting to be seven and a half percent less than Edison at those two locations.
And then, I have a question regarding this item as well. Is this a routine utility service revision of VMS, like the prior one?
I'm sorry, can you reschedule?
Yes. So is this a routine utility service revision of VMS, just like the last item?
It's similar, yes.
Thank you.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards, speaker cards, so I close the public hearing.
I move to adopt resolution number eighteen dash zero four four to revise the Victorville Municipal Utility Service Electric Service Rules, Regulations, and Rate Schedules.
Second. Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B6. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against establishing speed zones on certain streets. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number twenty-three eighty at the close of the public hearing.
Are there any questions from staff, I mean, council members of staff?
Yes, I have questions, four questions. So when was this study done, and how long was the time period that it took to do this study? The second question is, when was the engineering slash traffic survey ordered by who? And was this an agenda item? And so we're circling back to that. And the next question is, tell me about the methodology that was used, because there's sampling that was taken, and there was many streets, but it only took a hundred cars. So I was wondering if you can kind of give me insight as to how that occurred. And the last question is, looking at ordinance twenty-three eighty, will each declared prima facie speed be rounded down? And I know there was an addition to B6, and I saw we did round down, and I'm assuming those are also the revisions that were not included here, and perhaps maybe that's why I'm not grasping some of that.
So the speed surveys took place over a period of several months, because as you can see, there are quite a number of speed zones. And as stated in the report, the speed zones need to be reevaluated at least every five years. And so for every speed zone, typically, one hundred vehicles will be measured, the speeds, with a, typically with a device such as a laser gun, and then those speeds are recorded, and then from that, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is determined, and then that is used to the nearest five-mile increment for the speed limit. It can be rounded down, and there are some changes that were in the supplemental item. None of those speeds are increasing, they're all decreasing. Some of them are reverting to the twenty-five mile an hour prima facie speed limit for a residential district, as noted in the supplemental items. So we have an ongoing contract with a company that conducts these surveys, so it's already in the budget. We didn't have a previous agenda item, because it's part of our annual process in updating our speed zones.
All right, thank you.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards, so I close the public hearing.
I'll move approval of item B6.
Should I be requested, City Clerk, read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Victorville establishing speed zones upon certain streets in said city and amending section twelve point twenty point zero two zero of the Victorville Municipal Code entitled Decrease of State Law: Maximum Speed on Various Streets. The motion was made by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez.
Mr. Kennedy, does your motion include waive, thank you.
Wait for the reading, is that part of the motion?
That is, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, items C1 through C6 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to pull items C2 and C6.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move approval of items C1, C3, C4, and C5.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So for item C2, this is the first of its kind that I was looking at, and I assumed it was something that Christian Gunter would work at. But I was looking at, it's not a community service division, it talks about more of development. And so through the first category where it says year-to-date report of new construction permits issued for every month, we cite, whether it's a commercial or a family residence, how many units, and then the valuation. The item for the valuation, is that the value of what's being paid, if we cut that in half? Or what is it for each one that we're doing, so that I understand what is happening with that valuation?
The valuations that are shown here, that are attached to a permit issue, these are collective amounts representing the construction value assigned to the permit. And that becomes meaningful in the assessment process when the county assessor's office reviews the activity, so they can determine how to assess properties going forward. You're right in that this is the first of this report. One of the things that I've been working on with the departments, and they've been really good at pulling data out, is getting reports that really kind of not only showcase, but give you measurables as to what's going on inside the departments. This is one that we've been working on and formatting for some time, because we actually think it's exciting information for you to have, because it gives probably the most current reflection of the construction activity, whether it's commercial, residential, that's occurring in your community.
And then I see we use a lot of charts. I don't see any flow charts, but I was wondering, is the skillset of any of the administration able to do any program logic models in order to show a visual graphic of what this is pertaining to?
So typically, a flow chart would be used to demonstrate a process, and so the types of charts here, the bar graphs, et cetera, are really the appropriate graphic demonstration of the building activity.
Right, there's a difference between flow charts and program logic models. It's very easy when we have a visual graphic to demonstrate the inputs, any kind of implementation of activities that are taking place, the intended outputs, whether they're short-term or long-term. And I wasn't sure if staff was, had that capacity to be able to show something in a graphic, rather than put numbers in here, and then we have to guess, well, what was the input, what were the implementations of the activities? What is the intended outcome?
We probably do, but that's not really applicable here. We've got very static information, it's very data-driven information that's just reporting actual activities. So I'm not exactly sure what the value or what a program, project logic model would do in this particular case. This is just showing activity.
Right, it would show cost analysis and cost effectiveness, it would show things of that nature. So when I looked at this, that's what I first saw, something that would have the end goal and what the beginning of it was. But you've answered my question, thank you. I don't have any further questions for item C2, so I'd move the item. Other item is C6. I'm just looking at one particular name that comes up here, it says Samuel Pulis, and I was under the impression that he's with the Mojave copy and printing. The only concern that I had when I saw the name was, I wasn't sure if he's an LLC or not, but why are we making checks to a personal, a person, rather than the actual entity, copy, printing, and machine? Or it's copy, yeah.
Can you give me a page number that you're referring to, please?
What is it?
What page number are you referring to?
You know, it's not labeled in pages, it doesn't have the numerization, but it's right next, right behind the first page that you write as a report. The second page has it towards the center. That was my only question for that.
It's likely the result of, that's how they've registered in our system as a vendor. I actually see quite a few with individual names in here, so they could be doing business with us as an individual, or maybe, maybe the full name's cut off, and we could look at that particular case and report back to you.
Thank you, I was just wondering if it was a company or it was an individual. So I also move item C6 as well.
A motion to approve the two items, I second. Your motion?
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1. Amendment number two. The franchise agreement with Victorville Disposal Inc. for solid waste and recycling services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve amendment number two to the first amended consolidated and restated exclusive franchise agreement between the city of Victorville and Victorville Disposal Inc. Authorize the city manager to make nonsubstantive changes and clarifications to amendment number two, and authorize the mayor to execute amendment number two.
Thank you. Any questions from council members of staff?
So here I have two questions. First of all, I'm looking at the eight percent rate. It says the franchise fee has been updated from the four percent to the eight percent. And I was wondering how this affects the rate components, and if that is passed on to the consumer. And the second question is, there were several individuals when we had our public hearing that were concerned about the Consumer Price Index, stating that we were using price, consumer index from something far away from ours, our city. Our city is not a very rich city like LA. But now I see that we have Riverside, Sandburn, and you know, in Ontario. And I know that was very unclear then, and these same questions continue to flow.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, in the most general terms, this item before you is really attempting to further memorialize properly our relationship with BRTech, which is Victorville Disposal or operates as Victorville Disposal, and provides your trash services and hauling services. The, you recall, we've gone through a rate study process. We've also gone through public hearings to establish rates for the next five years, where we've done a system analysis, and we've determined the needs to provide trash and hauling and disposal services. And as a part of that rate study process, and as it was approved, it did include the change in the franchise amount from four percent to eight percent. And that's already been approved per the rate study process that we've undertaken. This item effectively is intended to make consistent with what we approved, our contract with BRTech. And if we don't do that, they don't have the ability to administer at least the franchise component the way we've approved it in the rate study. So this, along with the other changes that you see in the staff report, including the CPI, I think speaking to the CPI comment, certainly we've identified here what is the most closest, and we're obligated to use the CPI that's most closest to our community. So that is the Riverside, Sandburn, and Ontario. And likely the change there, as I'm looking at the staff write-up, is because the agreement has been in place for some time, they were likely using the then-closest MSA.
Okay, and you mentioned something that I like to touch up on, touch upon. It said, here it says, however the five-year schedule of rates approved by the city council on June 5th was not the CPI outlines, the annual changes to the customer rate schedule, and that includes the up-to-date attachments. So you confused me a little bit when you had said that it had already been approved. I'm assuming you meant the fee schedule component, but the CPI was not approved, and therefore there is flexibility, and we could use something that was closer to ours, to something more amenable.
Um... Correct, my speaking was to the rate study over the five years, yes.
Thank you, no further questions.
Anyone else? No, everyone understood everything well? Okay.
Move approval of staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Ms. Gomez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, loan repayment agreement and promissory note between Victorville Municipal Utility Services Fund and the City of Victorville General Fund. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the loan repayment agreement and promissory note between the Victorville Municipal Utility Services Fund and the City of Victorville General Fund in an amount not to exceed $17,850,143.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members of staff at this time?
Move approval of the item D2.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, roof rehabilitation and maintenance project at Northgate Village Apartments. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve resolution number 18-068 approving the CHODO reservation and commitment of home program funds agreement and authorize the execution by the city manager of the home CHODO agreement by and between the City of Victorville and National Community Renaissance of California in an amount not to exceed $426,225.23 for the roof rehabilitation and maintenance of the Northgate Village Apartments and approve a fiscal year 2018-2019 budget amendment to use home program income funds in the amount of $190,953.
Thank you. Council members, any questions of staff?
Yeah, just a question. Keith, this is a property that we sold a number of years ago, one of our low-income, are we responsible? Even though I realize it's with grant funds.
Correct, it's not that we're responsible for repairing the roofs and you're correct. This property does have some history that dates back to, I believe it was finally completed in 1992-ish when the city, using a nonprofit, was formed, actually acquired, redeveloped the site and eventually owned and operated up until about 2005. And we did sell the property to a nonprofit housing developer then called SoCal Housing, now called National Community Renaissance. They are the current owner and they are an active nonprofit that actually provides affordable housing. So they do meet all of the affordable housing requirements prescribed under the original contracts. This more so has to do with the fact that the property is aged and needs repairs and we do have a funding source through the CHODO program. It's a home-based housing program that's actually administered through the Housing and Urban Development Department and we actually get it as a function of our CWBG entitlement. But interestingly, with these community housing development organization funds, there are not many CHODOs around. In fact, I believe Core, National Core is probably still the only qualified in this area. So with that, we've made a commitment because of their designation in the past to use these funds that are available. These are funds that we actually pool with the town of Apple Valley and administer with the town of Apple Valley. So in large part because they're the only one and because we have an obligation to spend on affordable housing or to benefit affordable housing, this is a project that qualifies. And I believe this is kind of the bookend to the roof issues that they've had out there. We've under previous grant of CHODO funds to this same project have already repaired maybe 13 buildings worth of roofs and this completes out, I think it's five or six, to complete out all of the structures out there.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Since this is a community housing development funds and we are going to be assisting affordable housing project that's owned by someone else, I would like to see an assurance from staff or council that it'll remain affordable. I would hate to see us put money into a project and have them raise the rents and have complaints from people living there that it's no longer affordable. There has to be some kind of an assurance. I'm assuming it's there, but I haven't seen it and...
Mayor Protem Cox, there are affordability covenants currently on the property and with the each allocation of the CHODO funds, additional affordability covenants. In this case, we're rehabbing five building roofs and I believe it's 36 units. So the 36 units will be deed restricted to affordable households for 30 years. 30 years.
Okay, let me see here. I do not have any speaker cards or, I'm sorry, anyone else?
I move approval with that explanation, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, ratification of a standard lease agreement for building 652. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors ratify the execution of the standard lease agreement by and between SCLAA and Rayjoy Machine and Fabrication Incorporated for building 652 and adopt resolution number SCLAA 18-003 amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for additional revenue in the amount of $103,243.10 and additional appropriation in the amount of $18,000.
Thank you. Questions from council members of staff?
Yes. Has the walkthrough been memorialized?
Sorry?
Has the walkthrough been memorialized for this building?
Not yet.
Not yet.
It has been performed, portions of it have been completed. More specifically, I think if you're referring to safety, the building department has been a partner in this, so they have inspected it and the building does have a certificate of occupancy. For our purposes as a landlord, we've not yet memorialized the complete walkthrough.
And have we checked?
Big forthcoming soon.
Have we checked the building for us vessels or do we know about that? And another question is, would you contextualize the Air Force era in conjunction with the leasers' assumptions of certain duties, obligations under the quick claim deeds that are affecting the use and the occupancy of the lease premises? And I can refer what question, what pages I'm referring to, 863 and 854.
In the standard sublease form? Are you referring to a page within the standard sublease form?
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing you.
Are you referring to a page within the standard sublease form?
I'm referring to the report that we had and so the page I have is 863 and 854 and that would be the standard lease agreement. And in that lease agreement, on page 863 says that the leaser has assumed certain duties and obligations to the Air Force grantor of the quick claim deed. So I hung on to that. And then on the beginning, we also talked about the Air Force. So I was assuming that with the Air Force, there's certain things that must be done that are different from the city. So I don't know if that was something that you can briefly explain?
Not briefly. I mean, this gets into the circular process in and of itself. So these are disclaimers to ensure that the tenant fully understands what is at play. Now, we do have asbestos reports for that building that are available to the tenant anytime that he or she wants to see that. So we are, we disclose all the information. The Air Force also has a website disclosing further information. Thus far, everything that the tenant has encountered due to the nature of the building has not required any further environmental.
Okay, and my last question, I emailed this to staff, but I said I would ask it regardless. Would you provide me at least with two examples? I believe there's at least two examples that you can point out between December 2016 and today's date that produces the supposed opportunities that have been casted when you have a lease approval. And this is why we're hanging our hat on this. This is something beneficial to the city and we've done this in the past. So as an example, I'm sure you can come up with two and then that'll trigger my memory and I know which agenda items those would be.
You referring to other leases, other opportunities we've had? Just recently, just this year, we brought Cabo Aerospace over here, we brought First Class. We had two different leases with air ambulance companies. Actually, I'm sorry, we had one renewal and two new leases with Reach Air Medical Services.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank staff and it's always great to see our facilities being leased up when other facilities, San Bernardino, Los Angeles, and all the other local and regional airports have issues or they grow out of their space or they need somewhere else. And I really think this is a great indication of the consistent activity that's happening at the airport. And these are really good news stories, Eric, and again, just for the whole staff, you guys, you know, you're doing a great job. And, you know, we have a lot of issues dealing with city business, but this is always a good one when someone leaves somewhere else to come to Victorville. So I always like to say welcome to all of our new businesses. We really do root for everyone to be successful up here. It's a great relationship and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. And likewise, we thank your support for all that you do as well.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards for this item. So can we have a motion?
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, appointment of voting delegate and alternate to the League of California Cities 2018 Annual Business Meeting, General Assembly. I would like to appoint Jim Cox as delegate. And...
I'd like to suggest that he be the alternate.
Very well. Can we have a motion? Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, I sent out an email to staff and I was waiting for their response. I haven't read their response, but it has been my firsthand witness of a lack of active council members, not only in things like this nature. So I went to this thing, right, with the California Leagues with appointments and voting delegates and Mayor Garcia was the actual voting delegate. And I don't remember if it was Negretti who was the alternate. And I was not appointed to any of those seats, but of course, I went ahead and I arrived and I was very dismayed to know how we appoint individuals who do not make it to such organizations on our behalf and yet we keep appointing individuals who cannot make it. Mr. Cox has been involved and I have seen him contribute, but I also see him at the committees. I haven't seen him quite often at the Sacramento levels. But I would start to say that when we appoint the delegates and the alternates, that we definitely look at their history and where they've traveled and if they've actually cast a vote on behalf of the city because when we do something in front here, it's just for show to say so-and-so is going to go and so-and-so is not going to go or whatever, but yet you have a third person attending and not having that opportunity to cast a vote for the wide city for their benefit. And I like to put that on the record and I also would like, as the email said, to please provide me with the last two terms of information for who have been appointed and their actual attendance of these things. Thank you.
For your information, I have never been a delegate.
That's not what Mrs. Dunn said when I asked her, so I'm just going to verify through paperwork now.
Yes, you wish. I do have one card for this item here. Deanne...
On D5, Deanne Hudgens.
Just an opportunity to comment on the California League of Cities. I understand they're opposing the repeal of the gas tax and opposing the repeal of the vehicle assessment. And whomever would be attending in our place, I would certainly hope they would voice the opposition to that because that is certainly a huge cost to those of us who are putting gas in our cars. And also, I'm not affiliated with this thing, but our Chamber of Commerce is also opposing it and I think that's really horrible. Thank you.
That was the only speaker card that I had.
I have a motion from Mr. Kennedy and seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, ratification of sewer emergency repairs at various locations. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council ratify the emergency declaration for sewer repairs completed by ProPipe Services.
Thank you. Any questions by council members of staff? None? I do not have any speaker card.
So I move to ratify the emergency declaration for sewer repairs as described in this report.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D7, memorandum of understanding with the Victor Valley Union High School District adding and funding one school resource officer. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council ratify the memorandum of understanding between the City of Victorville and the Victor Valley Union High School District for the period of September 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for that agreement.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at Schedule A Law Enforcement Services Contract, City of Victorville, 2018-2019. The level of service, we have one, it says captain. So I assume Captain Bessenger was our captain based on this service contract. And for the year 2018-2019, the cost is $366,616. When I saw that amount, I figured that's his yearly salary and it probably does not include French benefits. So I'm asking, does that include French benefits and that's his yearly pay, yes or no?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I see that item and I think the general answer is that in all of these cases, they're what we would call fully burdened charges. And particularly speaking to the captain position that's on that list, there is a footnote with a number one on it and at the very bottom of the page, it describes what that footnote is and it says personnel costs includes salary and benefits and are subject to change by board supervisor. So it includes more than just salary.
And then I was assuming Mr. Fisher was our lieutenant, but I've heard that he's no longer in this office. So who's our lieutenant?
That would be John Wickham.
I'm sorry, who is it?
John Wickham.
Okay. And the last thing, for five resource officers for school, which school districts are we, do we position these five different SROs?
So three SROs are assigned under contract, similarly-natured contract with the Victor Elementary School District. And it's my understanding they get to effectively decide where those resources are deployed amongst their schools. The remaining two, as this contract would cover, includes the two that would... The remaining two, as this contract would cover, includes the two that would go to Victor Valley High School District. And it's my understanding they intend to have one assigned to Victor Valley High School and then a second assigned to Silverado High School, I believe is correct.
And then, lastly, it says startup costs. What were our startup costs that we had for $10,480?
The only thing I can think of as it relates to this is probably the admin associated with getting this effectuated. This is something new additive to our standard level of services.
You mean the SROs or you mean the contract?
This contract. And if I might point out, in this particular case, the relationship is expected to start September 1. And in this particular case, the high school district is going to pay 100% for the remaining fiscal year. Our traditional relationship is the districts pay nine months as they're in school for nine months and then we effectively pay for the remaining three months for that officer. The value, I think the best way to describe the value, there's a lot of ways to do it, but one of the things that we encourage in the districts adding on more SROs is it actually frees up our dedicated officers in the city for the issues of the city. And therefore, these SROs can attend to the more specific issues at the schools, but they're also a valuable resource in being able to share intel back and forth between the schools and the city.
That raises a question, my understanding that the startup cost was related to the original contract has nothing to do with this SRO officer.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
There's not a startup cost related to the SRO officer that added here, is there?
My understanding, and I could be corrected differently unless Captain Besseger knows better than I, my understanding is that this is for the costs associated with the administration of this revised Schedule A. So, I can imagine there likely being a legal cost, admin cost, a task to this particular exercise of putting the Schedule A before you.
Well, the startup cost, if you add it with the rest of the cost, you end up with the $25 million. So, this is a startup cost as part of the contract. And in regard to the SRO, the school's paying for it, right?
The startup costs are in reference to the SRO position, the $10,480, is that what we're talking about? Yes, that's actually going to be paid by the school district or reimbursed to the city.
Okay, I do have two cards. The first one is April Pinkston. And after April, Armando Talis.
I just became aware of this, good evening, City Council Mayor. I just became aware of this tonight as I was reading. And regardless of the salary, I did my student teaching at Victor Valley High School and I'm concerned that you're only going to appoint one. I just, I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but why would there only be one for the entire district? Regardless of what their salary is, that's an awful lot of school campuses for them to be responsible for. And as a retired teacher who was assaulted by a student, I just think that maybe you need to consider hiring more than one. And that's just my humble opinion and I'm going to leave it at that.
Madam Mayor, if I might, to address the comment, I think it's a good comment, but the decision as to staffing SRO levels at the respective districts, whether it's Elementary School District or High School, is really a decision driven by the board of that respective entity. We would certainly encourage more SROs, but really, it comes down to their budget capabilities. And this is probably the second SRO just in the last year. So, we believe the High School District is recognizing the significance of this. Elementary School District, we believe, has for some time now. But as to the decision of the number, that's really driven at the district level. We serve effectively as a conduit for those officers at the districts. So, they use our contract, our general contract for the police services at large, and they effectively piggyback off of that. So, what happens here is while we're approving a contract with County of San Bernardino for Sheriff's Service, we also then coincidentally enter into a memorandum of understanding with the High School District in this case, so they pay us back. So, it effectively is intended to be a net neutral cost to us, at least in this year. But to answer the question, the number of officers is driven by their budget and their request.
I hope it answers your question. Okay, Armando Talis.
Yes, good evening, council. My name is Armando Talis and the reason for my comment this evening is more on the caution for the individual who will be appointed in this position. As a Marine Corps veteran, as well as a father, as well as a member of my community who is involved with youth on all different levels of their learning experience from grade school through college, one thing I do know is that although we have aggressive students in the classroom that may and have in times posed threats to adults and others in the classroom, I do know that adults are also at fault for the sensitivities as well as for the lack of cultural awareness in the environments in which they are in or teaching. That for the sake of this particular discussion of this item for the funding of this officer, I would also adhere to the caution of the training that this individual receives. And as the city manager had indicated, there's parallels between law enforcement and this individual. Therefore, I'm cautioning on the militaristic tactics that this individual is going to be entering these schools and the kind of methods in which they're supposed to engage with students versus how to work with students on more of a compatible level than an authoritarian level. So, my comment is strictly to the fact that I adhere to the training of this individual, be more of a focus and that is the funding, as it is, this individual will be covering many campuses, many youth from different age groups, including many students of ethnic background. That with the badge and with the weaponry on them, it's very easily to villainize individuals who may demonstrate some kind of aggressive behavior. That I encourage this council to work with the school district to overseeing the kind of training, cultural sensitivity training that these individuals also receive. Thank you.
Those were the only cards that I had, so can we have a motion?
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any further questions or comments?
Yes, just for verification, so the 2018-2019 yearly cost for law enforcement services is approximately $25 million, right? Yes, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D eight, 2018 Mandatory Conflict of Interest Code Review. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council direct the city clerk to conduct a review of the Conflict of Interest Code for the City of Victorville, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and Victorville Water District, determine if any changes are necessary.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council members of staff?
Yes. So, for this one, if someone can please provide me with past states where this has been reviewed in the past, like with the executive administration, if you guys have information. This is my first time also looking at this item. And suspicion of that because it talks about the Political Reform Act. It was brought to my attention by individuals. Does this have anything to do with the conflict of interest that potential council members could have when we're talking about FPPC? And that's in regards to property? There's only one sheet which says really nothing, so I don't know how anybody can really vote on just a single sheet. So, I don't have any background what this requires, what it is, what's the intention, but FPPC for every local government agency to review its conflict of interest codes. So, I wanted some more information on this, where it's coming from, maybe build some context for the item to show the wording and where it's leading and where it's been in the past.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, to answer those questions, I think the best way to summarize this item is that this really kickstarts the process and it's required that direction be given to the city clerk to initiate the process to determine the basics of your conflict of interest code. And the document as I know it, very generally, that the city clerk will start circulating upon being given the direction, is going to first start identifying or asking and then identifying who, which positions, whether it's in the city, or which individuals that represent on particular boards are required to comply with the rules of conflict of interest, having to disclose their personal interests. So, in this particular case, we'll likely, as we've done in the past, and I believe it's something we've done annually, it's something that will start circulating internally. And as an example, our department heads will review it and determine if the positions in that document are still current or if there are new positions that need to be added, if there's positions that need to be deleted. And they'll determine which positions require the certain level of disclosures, which then triggers them being subjected to having to fill out the Form 700s and those types of forms. So, this is really a precursor to the next step of requiring certain bodies or certain individuals to file 700s. Hopefully, that helps.
I'm going to be a little bit more pointed. I know that one of the planning commissioners, I don't know if this person has recused themselves from certain things that are coming, I haven't really paid attention as closely as I have for our council members. But, so then what you're saying, we all have to here file our 700s, our 460s and our 470s to know if we have property, who gives us money, we have committees, all that is public information. And so, if that's the case, I mean, I see where the line of train is coming towards this, but it's not as clear and as specific as to if this is just something very procedural, why do we have to look into this city staff and why would they be reported if they're appointed and they're not elected? Versus someone, do you see what I'm saying?
I think the, yeah, and I think the easiest way to answer that is before we or the city clerk sends out the 700 forms, as an example, just arbitrarily to anybody, there has to be a decision made as to who's subjected to the requirement to fill that out. So, that's what this is doing, this is initiating that first step to identify in the code who's required to comply. And then, once that's determined and approved by this council, then we would initiate the process of circulating things like the 700 to those that are affected.
I think it's pretty clear that the state law, which is the Political Reform Act, requires every local entity, every local agency, which is a city, to review its Conflict of Interest Code every two years, period. Nothing to do with whether anyone has declared a conflict or not, it's required and it's the city clerk that does it. So, I think it's related to anyone who's declared a conflict or may declare a conflict or has declared a conflict. It's a requirement that this city review its code every two years and the responsibility to do it. So, move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia, any further questions or comments?
Yeah, if staff would please provide me those codes and that information, I'd like to actually look at what is it that you're going to be circulating and how that formulates what our discussion has taken place today.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D nine, five-year lease purchase agreement for radio equipment for fire vehicles, command staff and emergency personnel for the City Fire Department. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the annual amount of $66,607 for a total amount of $333,035 as a budgeted for in the fiscal year 2018-2019 adopted budget and authorize a deputy city manager, city treasurer to execute all lease purchase documents.
Thank you. Again, council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, right here where the reporting says that staff recommended the purchasing, what staff was involved? Is that the staff for our new fire department or was that just the executive administrative staff? Or was it a combination of both?
Both.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D ten, amendment to agreement with Woodard and Curran for miscellaneous engineering and consultant services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve Amendment Number One to the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Woodward and Curran for miscellaneous engineering and consulting services for the industrial wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $90,000.
Thank you. Council members, any questions of staff?
Yes, is this merely procedural or is this a continual phase? If the $90,000 will be required and this company has been with us or with the city, are we going to be filing in the future after this one, RFP, a request for quote? I know they've been with us doing, but I don't know if it's procedural or it's in stages. So, then I would assume if it's in stages that we would have probably known the allocation of the amounts of the maintenance, but I don't know because I wasn't there.
We weren't anticipating going out with an RFP for engineering services because we've had a long...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'll get closer to the microphone. We were not anticipating going out with an RFP for engineering services because we've had a long relationship with Woodard and Curran and they have provided engineering services for us since the plant was designed in 2008. And they're intimately familiar with the plant and that's why we wanted to continue to use them. This is an estimate over what we think we'll need over this fiscal year and we'll only use the services as needed. It's in essence like an on-call contract, so they will only bill if we need a service throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, does Charlene Robinson have a new title, is she the district secretary?
She is the secretary for various districts, just as she is the secretary for the Airport Authority. She serves the role of city clerk and then secretary for these various other entities of the city.
Thank you for that clarity, no other question.
I do not have any speaker cards, thank you. Or did anybody else have any questions?
Move approval of item D ten?
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to public comments.
Madam Clerk, you want to read the statement? Yes. Public comments. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak, all communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 549-57.9, Penal Code Section 403.
Thank you. The first card that I have is... The first card that I have is Alcatelo, and after Al is Sandra Gabriel.
Just want to talk to the lady who voted down the golf course. I lived on the golf course for 17 years. If you think you're going to ruin my life by my property value going down, and how many people you're going to put out of work, how many people aren't going to be able to feed your kids, how many people are going to lose their homes, how many people prices are going to drop so low and their homes ain't going to be worth selling, how would you like me to come to your house and say, "Here's $10,000, get out"? You shouldn't even be up there, you're too young, you don't even know what the hell life is about yet. Does that tell you anything? You're the most disliked person up here in Victorville. Grow up. You're amongst adults here, act like them. Also, I'm going to tell you, I live on a golf course and I have a six-foot fence, and somebody sprayed my dog. My dog sits in the backyard and watches the golfers, he loves that. And he's a Shiba Inu, that's a Japanese dog. Somebody sprayed the hell out of my dog with pepper spray. And then when I didn't know he had it, when I petted him, I got it all over me, and my lips are still swollen, they can't, they figured there's another chemical in it besides what's normally in it. When I get the person, I get cameras all around my house now, high definition, I'll catch somebody, when I catch him, they'll wish the cops caught him first, I'll tell you right now, because they're going to get a mouthful of that stuff. I've been in pain for over a month, they can't do nothing about it. And I still don't want the golf course to close. You're going to ruin this whole city by closing the golf course. I don't even know what the hell you're thinking about. Change your mind tonight and keep that golf course open, or leave town.
That's what that speech you just gave about looking at decorum. You didn't say anything about the court orders. Mayor Garcia.
I'm going to have you removed if you don't be quiet.
Oh, now you're threatening, after his speech was done.
Move.
You're threatening me, but you didn't threaten the other person.
I'm not threatening anybody, I'm just keeping on-
You're threatening me to kicking me out.
Have her removed.
But you didn't help the other person.
Right now.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, you're next, if you don't be quiet.
The recent proposal for the board of recall Blanca is under trouble. You decide to strictly avoid the only person that is concerned about-
Have her arrested, please.
You can resign!
Have her arrested.
You called this government, resign!
Have them arrested. I'm tired of this.
Let's not get to solve anything, folks, let's keep it calm and pay attention to the decorum of this room.
Please, no more clapping, we're trying to conclude our meeting, and we have a lot of speakers here. Sandra Gabriel, and after Sandra, April Pinkston.
Good evening, city council members, thank you for letting me talk. My name is Sandra Gabriel, I'm a resident of Victorville, I'm a parent of two kids, and a representative of all the parents that couldn't come today, but I have their signatures with me.
You have to give it to the clerk.
Sorry, what is she submitting?
I don't know.
We, as parents, think that it is important to promote reading and children at a very young age. It is essential in child's development. Reading helps them have better language, use their imagination, acquire knowledge, and it is just very beneficial in general. These reasons are why it is important that children and young people go to the library, whether to look for information related to a specific homework assignment, or simply to look for a book they can read freely. Because of those benefits, we are grateful that we have a library in Victorville. However, we ask that the benches located outside the Victorville library be removed. They serve little or no purpose for the people who truly use the service provided by the library. Often, there are homeless people sitting outside on those benches smoking. On various occasions, they can even be found smoking marijuana. We believe that it is important to enforce the health and safety code of not smoking at public places, so that we can enjoy a healthy environment. Due to the reasons stated above, many of the Victorville parents prefer to go to the libraries located in his area or Apple Valley. Parents do not feel safe going to the Victorville library. Furthermore, some of the parents have children who have respiratory problems like asthma, and the cigarette they smoke worsen their health issues. Our kids are the future, it is important to promote their reading from a young's age, at a place where parents and kids can feel safe and secure, a place that is free from elements that are detrimental to our health and well-being. Assuming that our request will be taken in consideration so that we, the parents and children of Victorville, can all enjoy the services that are offered at the library, we thank in advice all the city council members.
April Pinkston, please. Please, can we keep it down? April Pinkston, and then Helen, no last name.
Madam Mayor, if I could just jump in real quick, it was the second time tonight we heard about this issue, loitering in compatible uses around city property, specifically the library in this case, so I'd like to recommend that we refer this to the police captain, to ensure that the safety of those folks are great residents using the library.
Absolutely correct. Uh huh, okay. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm April Pinkston, as most of you all know, and I've, sometimes I feel like I'm coming up here beating a dead horse, but I'm here to talk about the music ordinance, and I talked at length today with Mayor Protem Cox, and I was thrilled to death with his response, and I talked to Sophie Smith, and my just, my concern is, and my thanks, is that this is being acted upon, and I thank you very much for your concern. And, one of my biggest concerns is the fact that the police department is not being notified with the updates to the music ordinance, because just this last week, I was given some bogus information by the call center, and so I'd like to have that addressed, if you would, please. And that's all I want to say, is I thank you very much for the response that I've been getting. Thank you.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
I wanted to address myself to Blanca Gomez, but she's gone.
You want to wait until she gets back?
Yes, sure.
Okay, thank you. Sylvester Hill?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm a senior citizen and a Vietnam-era veteran, and I bought my home along the golf course for several reasons, as a retirement home, but the main reason was that I would like, I thought it was a historical landmark, I've been in the city for almost 50 years, and that my property value wouldn't, would either stay the same or go up over time. And I, we also bought it for, because it was close to other things like Kaiser and Social Security Office and the local downtown area, because we can't travel very far. Like I told, I emailed Charlene that I would implore you to keep the golf course funded, because I would hate to see what would happen once it's closed. I mean, there's talk of, well, you know, vandalism, homelessness, and just the upkeep of the property. So, that was my comment.
Thank you. Please hold your clapping until the end, if it's necessary, so we can continue, please. Levon Abila, and then I have Jeremiah, Jeremy or Jeremiah Lentz.
We have a petition with 394 signatures on it. We have a petition with 394 signatures on it, we want this golf course open, and we urge the city to put this back on the agenda so that we can talk about it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy or Jeremiah Lentz. See here? Levon Wilson?
Thank you so much, and good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. I, too, also live by the golf course there and went to see, it remained open. It was a shock to hear that it had been voted against the funding for the city to fund the golf course. Even sitting back there, I look on the seal of the Victorville seal, and it is a historic landmark for the, it's right there, the golf course, the Green Tree Golf Course is right there on your seal for Victorville. Something that I didn't understand when I was reading and then back, going back into the newspaper, I don't understand, I thought that there was a majority vote that had to happen in order for something to be passed, and there are two, two members here, Honorable Mayor Protem and Honorable Council Member Kennedy, that were not able to vote because there was a conflict of interest, because they live, they have property on the golf course. So that leaves three people to vote, and there were two votes that were for the keeping open of the golf course, and one that was against, and I don't understand how two out of three is not a majority, and I'm hoping that you will reconsider this, bringing this back up on the agenda, having a fresh vote where a majority is a majority. It wasn't out of five votes, it was out of three votes, and two was the majority. I have a little girl, she's almost five, we like to walk in our neighborhood, and it's getting harder and harder to walk in our neighborhood because there's, just beginning to be more and more things that undesirable there, drug houses and whatnot in the area, and so to be able to have that golf course as a safe place to walk with my dog and my daughter, when that flag's not up and it's safe, where there's not going to be golf balls flying too, but it's safe, and even when the flag is up, having those golfers, we talk with those golfers on a regular basis, they talk with me and my daughter as, we're not there walking with them, but we're passing by and we see them, and it's, it's a wonderful-
You have 30 seconds?
Thank you. It's a wonderful unity there, to have that gone is really going to be detrimental, not just for our neighborhood, but for the whole community. Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, if I might, I can answer really quickly the question about the vote requirement. There are certain items that require actually three votes of the entire membership of the council, and anything dealing with the appropriation of monies and budgetary items require the majority vote of the entire council, so it's the majority of five council members. Certain items can be done on a two-to-one vote, but not this kind of item.
Thank you for the clarification. Roger LaPlante, and after Roger, Helen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name's Roger LaPlante, and I'm here on behalf of the Veterans Caucus of my state party. We represent disabled combat vets, and to find out that you guys, apparently, a couple weeks before this music festival, it was canceled. There was millions of dollars of revenue that was lost, and you could actually pay for that golf course with some of the money that was lost. Disabled veterans come from miles around, from all over the country, to go to that Chalice Cup Music Festival for their medication needs. I don't understand why we do this within a couple weeks before, it just doesn't make any sense to me, I was just curious. The hotels in these prior Chalice Cups were sold out, this is hurting local business. I don't understand why, in an area where we need jobs desperately, that you would be cutting back on these businesses. I saw billboards on the I-15 advertising this, and I believe the city of Victorville gets revenue from these billboards, but you canceled the same Chalice Cup that was supposed to be over at the Victorville Fairgrounds. It also says on, it's the home of the San Bernardino County Fair. How does that look when you're canceling these functions a couple weeks prior to? And Councilman Negretti also said that you're going to root for all businesses. Seems to me that you're excluding cannabis industry businesses. These businesses are many jobs, we have to get along and try to organize the cannabis industry properly. There's a lot of black market out there that causes crime, we need to do it right. Prop 64 was voted in by 60% majority of citizens. This includes many disabled veterans that rely on this medication. So I would ask you, please, as a dius, reconsider for the next year's music festival and Chalice Cup, if we could bring that back to Victorville. I think it would be good for the city. Thank you very much.
After Helen, Armando Talis.
Hi, Mayor Garcia and the council. I wanted to address myself to Councilmember Gomez. I just want to tell you, I don't hate you, because last time you called us hater, I don't hate you. I don't, I am not this kind of woman, I don't hate people. I think you are cute, I think you have a nice smile, I think you are nice, but you are making bad decisions. I am also not jealous of you, as you call us jealous because you are in a city council. I have been in a city council when I was in Los Angeles, and believe me, Los Angeles is a bigger city than Victorville. The first thing you have to do when you become a member, it's to read the Brown Act. The Brown Act is a document which has been created for the city council, and will give you the opportunity to learn what you can do and what you cannot do as a member. This is like the Constitution of the United States, it's a document which has been created for the United States. So you are, actually, you are in violation of this document because you didn't respect the rule. I don't, I don't judge you, I don't criticize you, I just want to make you understand, there is a recall, document was going to be against you, and if you, in my concern, would be better for you to resign, with dignity, because if you resign, you still keep your dignity. If you are recalled, it's going to be very bad for you. Because if you are recalled, if, this is like the way they are kicking you out, and believe me, it's very bad for your resume, you will be unable to find a job. I am concerned for you, I am concerned for them, I am concerned for the community. Do the right thing, I think it would be better for everybody if you resign. Like I say, I don't hate you, you know- Like I say, I don't hate you, you know. I, you know, I like you actually. I think you're a nice person, but you are making bad decisions. This is just what I wanted to say, and I wish you well.
Armando Tellis, and after Armando, Jerry Everett.
Good evening, Council. Again, my name is Armando Tellis, and I'm here as a concerned citizen. It's been disturbing to be an observer to today's council proceedings, not only to hear the remarks made from the audience, but then from the outward look that's been expressed from this council. It was cleverly and very true that your, your seal does depict a green pasture with a flagpole or a golf pole included. But this country also claims to be the land of the free, and yet the United States incarcerates the most people in the United States. California's in a drought, and so to expect to have green in the desert, I'm not really sure what dream you're sold, but unfortunately, you're sold a pipe dream. I don't like seeing property values crashing. I don't like people seeing being displaced, but I also don't like knowing that water that is used for grass is limiting the possibility of water being fed to a person, or being used at a business to provide food for the public. I don't agree with the exclusiveness and the priority of a small group of people, although each and every person matters. Having budget money from the city being allocated to appeal and tend to those people's needs only is a neglect to the rest of the city. If you drive around this town, if you get away from the golf course, roads are unpaved, they are broken. You have buildings that are outdated. You don't have buildings that have ventilation systems. You have, you have one public library that is run by the city that doesn't as much as have a functioning air conditioning in it, but yet, the argument is about the money for a golf course. That is disconcerning. It's disconcerning that as taxpayers, this is where the priority is for the privileged and those of the majority who show up, who do vote, and who are mostly, at large, represented on this council, that I encourage those who are paying attention, seek at district elections. If you are unsatisfied with the representatives on this council, each and every single person can be replaced. And I encourage you to understand the strength you have as residents in district elections. Having a representative from your community on this council, not having multiple council members living in the same community, using taxpayer monies to accommodate their neighborhoods. If you're unsatisfied with it, run for office. You too can be held accountable. You too can be put to the public scrutiny, as Gloria Gomez, Blanca Gomez has been. That I'm standing here with Blanca Gomez and every single person of this council, who I may not be aware of, that speaks out against the status quo. Who speaks out against what is comfortable, who speaks out against special interests. Do what is right. Use your voice, just as Blanca Gomez has. Thank you.
Jerry Everett, and after Jerry, Diana Esmeralda. Is Jerry here? No? Okay. Diana Esmeralda.
Good evening, Council. My name is Diana Esmeralda Holte Casado. I am Secretary on the Board for the High Desert Cannabis Association. I just want to talk a little bit about the golf course. There are three different options that you can do. I mean, you can have a special district for the 680-some-odd houses that are benefiting on the golf course. You can turn it into a park, where all of the residents of Victorville can participate and have a good time there. Yes, people live on the golf course, and they're going to have to put a fence up if they don't want, you know, to see the golf course anymore, or if they want to protect their property. I know that homes everywhere are, you know, abut against parks, and they put up fences, and there aren't people, and homeless people, you know, mobbing those homes. So I think, you know, that might be something that might be able to be done. And then also, maybe the people who use the golf course can pay for the maintenance through their green fees. Okay? So if you want to go use it, you would pay the real fee, the real price of how much it costs, instead of having the city subsidize those golfers and those homes, and the rest of Victorville doesn't get anything from it. In conclusion, I would like to say about the Chalice meeting last council meeting, that I will be reporting each of you, except for Blanca Gomez, to the grand jury, because 57, 56% of voters in Victorville voted for Prop 64, and medical cannabis has been here for 20 years. And you are not doing the will of the voters. You are not taking your oath of office and doing it. So what I'm saying here is that expect an investigation from the grand jury, that you have not been doing what you voted, what people voted you in for, which was to regulate cannabis and create safe access for medical patients. Recall Gloria Garcia. She shouldn't be mayor. She doesn't do exactly what the voters want.
Christine Blakely, and then after Christine, Lionel or Lenell Bennett.
Hello, my name is Christine Blakely. I also live by the golf course. I am so sorry. I've been dealing with Victorville since 1976. I have two sons that's a veteran, one that is a police officer who is no longer with us. I have a solution to your Green Tree Golf Course problem, and your skate park problem. Take your skate park and put it in your golf course. The golf course is a lost cause. I'm sorry. Please forgive me. There are parts of the golf course that look worse than the Mojave Desert. I'm sorry. Parts of it look good, parts of it are dead and gone, and already a fire hazard. You're going to see homeless there anyway. Don't say they're not, because that's the first thing I see when I get off of Palmdale anyway, are the homeless. So they're everywhere. Once you cleaned out the riverbed, they just went everywhere. You haven't, the road by the library has been like that forever. I don't know why you haven't spent the money to fix that street. It's been like that forever. I don't know why you won't pay our first responders. You claim you don't have the money. I'm so tired of hearing that. I'm so tired of the homeless. You say you want to help our kids, put the skateboard park at the golf course, and stop spending a half a million dollars to cut the dirt. It's just that simple. As far as you council members fighting amongst each other, I don't care. None of you are doing your job, because you're not looking out for the best interest of the city. You're going up and down Seventh Street, putting up trees, taking down trees, putting up trees, taking down trees. For real? For real? Do something serious with our money. How can you keep doing all this stuff? We've been in debt for over 30 years. An outside city audit. Follow the money trail. Then we'll know what's really going on, because you're lying to us. We vote for stuff, and you go behind that door, and you do little sneaky crap. You guys are a bunch of criminals. You're a bunch of crooks. You've been on the board longer than Jesus, and you can't get anything done. Please, you guys, stop. Stop! Save the green tree by putting the skateboard park there. Don't put it by Pebble Beach. You know what's going to happen over there.
You have 30 seconds.
You know what's going to happen. You're going to get more fresh blood for the gangbangers. How do I know? Because I live near there. Don't do that. You got water and pretty grass over at the Green Tree Inn. Stick the skateboard park over there. Then you can see it from the freeway. Since you're so concerned what you can see from the freeway. Tiger Woods ain't going to play there. You can't beg people to play there. For real? You could have put it anywhere. Put the skateboard park at the golf course. Let it be beautiful.
Your time is up.
Concrete, trees, and benches.
Your time is up.
And anybody could be happy.
Your time is up. Lenell Bennett, and after Lenell, Maggie Martin.
Hello, my name is Lenell Bennett. I'm talking for the golf course. It is the only park that we have that creates money. So if we make another park, it's not going to create money. At least this golf course does create money. It may not pay for itself, but it does create money. Number two, there are high school kids playing golf on the golf course. There are people from all over, not just Victorville, that play on the golf course. We had people from Europe playing on the golf course the other day. We had someone from Arizona playing the golf course the other day. So it is used. Secondly, if you're going to pay the golf course workers for some period of time, because you're obligated for another year, why not at least let them continue working to keep the golf course up as much as possible, hoping that the council will change their mind, and/or in November, we can get a council that will vote for it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. After Deanne, it's Maggie Martin.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you, I didn't hear you call my name. Thank you again. I'm, I'm going to speak this time about a homeless, the homeless situation that is huge and mentioned here in several contexts, even tonight. We have a business that says it's closing in Victorville because of the homeless. It's the Itchy Foot Deli there in the old Target Center. The Daily Press says that the owner reports that the customers and employees don't feel safe. They've done everything to provide the best barbecue and customer service possible, but people are afraid, hang on, let me find, to come here. And he says, because they're located to the west of Kyra's Imperial Medical Hospitals, that's turned in for an encampment of street people who panhandle, sleep, defecate, and pick through trash and harass customers. I have, not recently, to our, to the newest chief of police, but I have written many times, when I'm not, you, I'm manager before you, about my concerns for the homeless. And Terri Gossett Flint wanted me to read a post for her that she wrote in, on Facebook regarding the closing of this, this business, as well as her, her concerns about the homeless. This is Terri's comments. What the heck is wrong with the city of Victorville Council? We are losing yet another business. I guess Target wasn't enough. I'm wondering if any of the councils ever drive through town? Do we still have code enforcement personnel? The homeless have taken over Victorville. I am so tired of dealing with the mess, filth, and panhandling. I can't do any shopping in this town. I have to go to Apple Valley or Hesperia. Remember when Victorville was the key city? Laughable now. I'm wondering how much longer we will be able to live here. What a shame. The council should be embarrassed. That was from Terri. Thank you.
Maggie Martin, and after Maggie, Marilyn Everett.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. From today's Daily Press editorial board, I'm going to excerpt an article, and it is regarding our esteemed Councilmember Kennedy. I'm going to, like I said, excerpt, delete a couple comments. Just so you know, sir, it says, Kennedy will be missed. However, besides offering financial expertise that Victorville has put to good use over the past eight years, Kennedy has sound judgment and exhibited fairness. He was big enough to admit when he had made a mistake, but smart enough that he rarely made any. He was a man of his word, who seemed able to get along with just about anyone who had half a brain. Kennedy truly appeared to want what was best for Victorville and its residents, and his votes certainly helped the city move forward in several key areas, including the Green Tree Extension. Kennedy has thrown his support in the 2011 November election to incumbent, esteemed Councilmember Eric Negretti, and our newcomer, Deborah Jones. That's that lady sitting right, lovely lady right there. Yeah. It remains to be seen how voters will respond, and whether or not other candidates will emerge seeking to succeed Kennedy. For the city's sake, voters would be wise to look for someone like Kennedy, who has the maturity, wisdom, intellect, and financial knowledge that can make such a big difference in local government. Honestly, we haven't seen a lot of candidates in the high desert who can meet such standards. We've already seen in Victorville what can happen when voters make a bad choice, and how such a choice can wreak havoc on a city council and a community. For everyone's sake, we hope that lesson has been learned, and the mistake of 2016 won't be repeated this fall. In the meantime, excuse me, in the meantime, as Kennedy nears the end of his term, we hope residents will take the opportunity to thank him for his service and educate them, themselves, on the candidates this fall, so that Kennedy's successor will be someone they can be proud of, and someone who will help move the city forward, not back. Thank you, Councilman Kennedy.
Thank you. Marilyn Everett, and after Marilyn, William Paul.
Thank you, honorable council members, for letting me speak to you this evening, on behalf of keeping the golf course. Victorville needs our golf course. The golf course is a beautiful carpet of green, meandering throughout our city. The golf course provides respite for birds and squirrels and bunnies and raccoons, and the golf course is especially a delight for dog walkers, and those just wanting to get out on our green belt and under shady trees and maybe regroup mentally. What a contrast and travesty it would become if our city removed this beautiful and serene Victorville beauty mark. It would be a travesty and disaster to replace the golf course with a useless brown wasteland to spread more dust and trash and unwanted activities. And it would be a disaster to drive away potential new residents to our fair city. So, honored council members, Victorville needs our golf course.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. I'd like to speak in regards to the golf course issue. Many people this evening have spoken with great passion, sometimes eloquent, sometimes not so much, about the concept of keeping the golf course. I would simply urge that perhaps we take a more creative approach to solving the problem of how to keep the golf course. I'm not going to present any ideas or any far-flung concepts. Skate parks, my kids skate, I don't think that's necessarily the answer. I will tell you that, and like many people here, and I see a lot of my neighbors here around me, one of the great things about the golf course area is that it is a true neighborhood. I moved here from Germany, where I lived for 19 years, working for the United States Army. I chose Victorville because I wouldn't choose Barstow. That's not actually a rag on Barstow, but even though my commute is three hours round trip, I gladly do it every day, to have the infrastructure and the neighborhood in which we live in. My wife and I chose the neighborhood because of its calm, its peace, the beauty, looking behind our backyard and not seeing another neighbor directly behind us. We see Joshua trees, pine trees, the animals that were so eloquently spoken about. And we also see a lot of golfers, get a lot of golf balls as well. So I would urge a creative approach to keeping the golf course at all possibility. I too don't believe that a park is necessarily the answer. It's not income generating. And I can tell you, working for the United States Army, where budgets are high, high concern daily, creative approaches are necessary for maintaining financial security at all levels. So I would appreciate reconsideration of this. So I would appreciate reconsideration of this concern, and I think of your time and for the opportunity for us to present ourselves in true democratic fashion in the spirit of the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Those were all the cards that I had. So now we will be moving on to a report from our city manager.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, we have a couple items coming up that I want you to be aware of. First, on Saturday, August 4th, over at the Victorville Murph on Abbey Lane, there's a shred fest and mulch giveaway between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00, 8:00 AM, 12:00 PM, I'm sorry. It's open to all Victor Valley residents, sponsored and co-hosted by the City of Victorville, Town of Apple Valley, and Bertech Waste. Also then, on August 7th, that's National Night Out. It's a Tuesday, it's a council night, or at least scheduled council night, between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00, right out here in front of Victorville City Hall, open to Victor Valley residents, co-hosted with the Victorville Police Department. It's a great opportunity for the community to come out and get to know some of our folks that serve on the law enforcement side. That is a council night. I know we've had opportunity in the past, when council meetings haven't run too long, to go out and participate, and it's, it's a very fun opportunity to be a part of. That's all I got.
Thank you. So now we move on to our discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda.
Madam Mayor, I have one. Want to raise a point that Jim Cox was making at our last meeting when we had our discussion about the Chalice Festival. I didn't get the point at that time, but since then, I think I do have it. And I'm going to ask that we agendize a discussion about our ordinance. Let me give you a little bit of background. The Fairgrounds has been, located in Victorville for how many years? Fifty, seventy, eighty? I don't know. Forever?
Seventy.
Gloria wouldn't know, wouldn't you? No, I'm kidding. We have never, in all that time, exercised any authority over the fairgrounds whatsoever. We have never issued a permit. We have never told the fairgrounds what they could or couldn't do. They're run by the fair board. It's a state or county property, but it's not Victorville's. I want to have a discussion about bringing our ordinance back and carving out the fairgrounds and, and have none of our ordinance have anything to do with the fairgrounds. So that's, and then if they want to have a festival, they are on their own. They don't have to ask us for a permit. It's, it's crazy that bureaucrats in Sacramento wrote into the regulations, not even in the law, wrote into the regulations that the local cities give permits to the, to, to the local fairgrounds on, on events that they want to hold. So that's my request, that we agendize that item and get it back. Jim, and I, I apologize for missing that point last time.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, so the use of technology to allow our audience to see on screen the voters and what we cast, I think it's something that we need to get up to par with our technology. We already have it in place, it's just a matter of actually using it, and we haven't been using it. That's what I like to add to the agenda.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
The second thing that I've gone out a couple of times now, and I've heard from the general public, is the importance of the district elections. Four of us live in the same vicinity, so if you're misrepresented, we need to have district elections to better represent the entire community, which is 72 square miles, about 130,000 people. When we live in the same vicinity, we don't represent you very well. So I like to add to the agenda, district elections.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
Are you done?
Yeah, with adding anything to the agenda, yes.
I have a question, I don't know if anybody recalls, the question of having special districts where a charter city, that went to the voters. What was the vote on that?
Yeah, the vote, the vote was to amend our charter to allow for it, and the popular vote, and I think was something like 60%, it voted it down.
Voted it down, but it was a pretty large majority, as I recall.
I'm not sure exact percentage, I can get that information for you, but it was measure, it was measure X and it failed.
No, as a point of order, Mr. Hughes sent the attorney a letter, which he didn't really respond to, so it's a waiting game, so we're waiting on you. Shankman Hughes sent you a letter. So that's what we're waiting on, and it hasn't been addressed.
We did respond to that. That's why we went and had measure X on the ballot, and it failed.
No, that measure, we're talking about six months from now. I just wanted to make that clarity, just, just saying.
That's enough, don't argue the point. Anyone else? Reports from council members? And you have five minutes?
I, I have a report. The, there are, there is a lot of committees that the city council members set on. And I attend those. And then there's the League of California Cities. There's the League of California Cities and the Mountain Desert Division of the League of California Cities. I don't normally tend the League of California Cities, that's once a year they have the meeting. But I do, I'm a voting rep on the Mountain Desert. I do tend the meetings. And I try to provide those minutes to the council, I don't make a report to the public because, I'm not sure anyone does. But I recently attended the Lake Arrowhead. The only reason I talk about that is because, I attended it because I was requested to speak on the homeless issue, and I did. And it's not really important. But one of the things that may be a belief that I don't attend the meetings, and I do, including Long Beach and, I can't name them, because I pay for it myself. I don't turn it in as an expense account, so it doesn't come up that I'm attending meetings. I choose to do that. If other members attend and get reimbursement, that's fine with me. I simply choose to pay for it myself, and I do so, so. Go attend the meetings.
You attend Mammoth, and you pay for it?
I tend them and I pay for it. I pay the hotel rooms, I pay it myself, I pay the mileage myself. I don't turn that in as an expense account. Just wanted to clarify.
We, we do attend.
That it, Jim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, just, I did eight years on the Water District Board and eight years on the council. One time, I flew to Washington DC to go back and beg for red, road money. That is the only time in 16 years I ever asked to be reimbursed for anything, and that was airfare. It was just, I mean, this idea of us living off the city is just crazy. Want to say something, I was really surprised when I picked up the paper this morning and saw the Daily Press coverage of my decision to not run for reelection. The only reason that came up was because I had a conversation with Shay Johnson yesterday on the phone, and the only reason he called me was because I sent a letter to him and asked them to publish it as a Valley Voice piece. And I think, and they've said they will, so sometime this week, maybe on the weekend, and it is my attempt to explain why we have the problem on this council that we have with the golf course, and what I believe are some real possible solutions that would allow us to keep the course. Now those of you who don't want the golf course and would like to see it turned back to desert, don't bother reading my piece, because you're not going to be pleased with it. But for those of you who want to see it stay as part of the city, please take time to read that, because I think my solutions are worth considering. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else?
Yes, it's interesting to hear two council members who live within 500 feet of the golf course saying that we don't live off the city, and we don't ask for reimbursement, yet 680 subsidized homes with their values are being subsidized by over 130,000 people off the back of working people, people who pay their bills, people who have such a hard time to find a very nice serene place to be at. I checked these last three weeks, door knocking, poll, and surveying families, residents, and individuals about the golf course. I also spent time making phone calls to other cities and electives outside the high desert. You see professors and locals at all places that happen to be, including Staples, Restaurant Row, and many, many more. During my survey, I found out that not only do Cox, Kennedy, and former council member Caldwell have properties abiding the golf course, but other commissioners do too. The question I posed was, what do you think about funding a golf course? And how can we better spend our tax dollars? And do you live in or near the golf course in Victorville? Overwhelmingly, the response was to either lease the golf course and not to lose money, sell it to a private company, and we can use our tax dollars elsewhere besides the golf course. Overwhelmingly, this response was time and time again. I happened to knock on Mrs. Porter's house, our commissioner, she wasn't happy. Kennedy was right next door, I didn't stop at his door because I knew his opinion. So I've started door knocking, I'm doing my job, asking people left and right. Staples, I said, do you like to, would you like to continue funding the golf course for other people's properties values to stay up higher? Absolutely not, is what they said. And I took their concern and I went on again. Very few people that I happened to knock at the door at that golf course said, well, yeah, I, I would, you know, I, this is, this is what I have, this is mine. The question, I already said the question, so since 1998, Old Town residents have visited these walls right here, and their, their outcries have not been heard. If we had spent half a million dollars since 1998, what we are losing on the golf course, we spend 1.2 million dollars, we lose half a million every year. Since 1998, have we, have we revitalized Old Town? We would have already invested $10 million in revitalizing Old Town. But council has decided to instead subsidize on the back of the working class, the poor, the marginalized, and the other properties that abut the golf course. That's over 130,000 taxpayers. And if we have 680 homes, about 2,000 people, about maybe a membership of 100, is that fair? Can the city justify, off the backs of so many people, to justify a very few to continue your privileged ways of living?
Madam Mayor, I want to respond because she, she, this council person made the comment before about the inflated values of the golf course. I gave a very short presentation. Anyone can contact the High Desert Realtors, the County Assessors Office, and it is absolutely false that the homes on the golf course are valued more. They in fact are valued less than the average. I have all the data. If anybody would like to see the data, I'd be happy to give it to you. I'd be happy to direct you to the County Assessors Office. The homes on the golf course are assessed less, it's an older neighborhood, it's a high rental area. And it's not true that this is a reserved for the rich people, it is not even remotely true. The facts are absolutely false, and I will provide the data once again. I did it once before, I did it fairly low-key. But when somebody keeps repeating a lie, it has to be answered, and I will answer that. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I have a council report. I have a council report. Thank you, ma'am. So I, I appreciate everybody who's still here, because usually, a lot of people get on with their evening, and your participation is very important. Part of the public comments section is intended for exactly the things that we hear. Even though, even though the things we hear may not be informed of all of the situations that are going on, which is understandable, we were elected to serve the community, and we do have a lot of information. And before we make comments, typically, I would believe the person is well-versed in the issue and is cautious about their impact of their words, but that does not happen. So what we get is half-truths, innuendos, accusations, conspiracy theories. The fact is, the golf course is part of our quality life park service offerings, and to demonize one section of the public who happens to live near this asset, really is what it is, the community, is laughable, and, and it's offensive. And for those people that live on the golf course, let me assure you that we are here to serve the community. Okay? And we've heard your comments, we've heard both pros and cons. Sometimes people hear just what they want to hear. But the fact is, that golf course is on that logo behind me, and it's there for a reason. It's what this city was built around. So to reverse course after all this time, I suppose someone could make that part of their platform if they wanted to, I don't know why. But that's usually what happens when people have limited information, they glom onto something. But I did hear a lot, and I wanted to assure the residents at the golf course that this is a complicated issue, just like the homeless, but we are working hard to resolve all of these issues in a timely manner. And there are many things that we can do. But when you have community leadership out there, public safety, fire department, police, teachers, we have, we are a community of leaders. There's a lot of leaders out there that we depend on all the time. The golf course, actually, the company there, that's another entity we're dealing with. The problems and complicated issues of canceling contracts, those are very complicated issues, and we're working through them. So I just want to assure you that. First, that we can exchange back and forth with the, with the public, which is, which is designed to be that way purposely. But since you all are here, I'd, I'd like to take the opportunity to also echo the comments I've heard today about the service that Councilmember Kennedy has provided the city. We, we have really benefited from his decision-making and just his rational approach and, and open-mindedness. So I'm, I'm humbled by your support, and it's unfortunate when you lose someone who's contributed so much and that you could rely on, the consistency, the service to the community, and the wisdom that goes with all the experience that he has. So it's just hard to hear finger pointing at us saying that, you know, we're bums, we don't serve the community, we're not doing our jobs. Well, I would disagree. I, I've been doing this job, and it's not an easy job. And for those that do participate, it is very rewarding, but make no doubt about it, it is service. And you got to take that seriously when you're talking about people's livelihoods and the community as a whole up here in the desert. Because that's what we're here, we're here for everybody. But we have limited funds and we have to make priority decisions all the time, that's what's part of the, the hard part. But, but I'm enthusiastic, I think we have a real sense of optimism, we've made a lot of progress in my short time, and I know from being a resident ever, up here ever since the 80s.
You have 30 seconds.
I went to Victor Valley High School, Hook Junior High School, I've been around. There were no trees around Hook Park when, when I went there, that's how long ago it was. But since, since Councilmember Kennedy has been on, on the council, we have certainly benefited greatly as a city, so thank you.
Okay, there's no further, oh, business before the council, so this one is.
Mayor, we still have to, we have to resume the closed session.
That is, right. We will.
City council reconvened on closed session, item I, and there is no reportable action with respect to item I, there was no reportable action with respect to any of the other items other than the reports previously done at 6 o'clock.
reports previously done at 6 o'clock. That's the end of the meeting.
The meeting is now adjourned.